America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The heat works.
Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Ridgeway?
Here.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Here.
You have the November 18th regular council meeting minutes in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
You have the approved bills list in your packet. One page, both sides. Are there any questions?
Mayor? I don't have any questions.
Wow.
That's different, right?
That's all right.
So if nobody else has any, let's pay them.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Same.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Okay, under boards and commissions, it looks like the planning commission met November 21st. The minutes are in your packet. It looks like they approved a lot split with a physical address of 232 East High Street. The park board minutes are in the packet. Mike, anything you want to mention regarding the minutes?
Well, I know we've been discussing a little bit about, um, parks pretty much cleaned up for the winter months here and the leaves picked up. Everything shut off, I believe. Um, we've been discussing a little bit about a sidewalk that would run along the park road from Arthur back to Spenderville. Um, so Eric's been part of that with the sidewalk committee and, um, different avenues with that. Uh, got a couple different, we'd like to get a price estimates. We got through some numbers out there.
Michael, if I could interject here, um, I did some calling to some of my contractor buddies. Uh, a pretty good round number. If you take that 120, change it to 25 and change the 288 to 60.
Sure.
And that's gonna be, you're gonna be right there in the ballpark for, for new.
Sure, all the way through there.
Yep.
Right, that's a much better number than what we kind of were kicking around.
Yeah, that'll save you quite a little bit.
Right, right. Uh, there are some grants to apply for those kind of projects, but it's a state grant and I don't know if we want to get into the grant applications with something like that. We might end up spending a lot more money than if something we could do on our own. Uh, but then also was a walking trail through the park or maybe out at the new, um, well field behind Haber Drive. We threw a couple options there. Um, it's on their radar for some grants. Um, we've not said anything in, said anything in stone. We wanted maybe kind of get the actual area where it would be, the distance, that kind of thing. But, um, looking maybe at those two sites. But, uh, we're working with the action trans, active transport group out of defiance, maybe for some grants for that kind of project. So it'd be a little bit more costly than the sidewalk. Be another asset for our community. I think we've got a nice walking trail of some kind or, um, you know, a path where people would utilize it and enjoy maybe some nature out more out on Haber Drive or behind Haber Drive and/or if it's in the park, that would be nice too.
Running our dogs?
Yeah, dogs, absolutely. But, uh, you know, within the park, the park's owned by three different entities. Um, a lot more obstacles to work around, but it would still, I think, would work out if we could work that out. We have a couple different groups here in the community for that moving forward. So, anything else?
Thank you. Can you tell me about this brick wall at the pool? Where's this at?
That's up at the, um, to go into the restrooms. It's just all deteriorated at the base. Um, they've checked with a couple different, I mean, bricklayers here. But it's a, like a cover wall before you walk into.
It's like a privacy wall so you can't see directly back there?
It's a men and women's or men and women's size?
I'm not sure which side it's on. I know they've been, it's been slowly deteriorating at the base. I think from the water and everything, the foundation of it. But, uh, I know they have a local contractor gave them a quote for repair.
Okay.
Part of the old pool building, I mean, that building is all those being used and yeah, that kind of, that's what we have, so.
Thank you.
Has, has Mr. Kuntzman talked with you about the opening on the, for the representative from the school for the park board?
He sent me an email and Cheryl, he sent me an email giving me two names. Cheryl contacted those people and told them that that needs to be approved by the school board.
Okay.
And then you guys.
Okay.
So I, she, she told the two interested parties, but she did not tell the school that they needed to take that step.
Okay.
So maybe somewhere along the line.
I told Cory to handle that. He's president.
Okay. So are there any other boards and commissions that have anything to report that's on the agenda? Okay. We'll go on to council committee reports.
Uh, the street light property sidewalk committee, um, we met, we, uh, actually had these minutes. Uh, well, we talked about the signs and parking uptown. We had a lot of discussion about the downtown parking issues and concerns with tow away zones, signs in different areas of reserving spots. Uh, after a lot of discussion between Nick Slattery, Randy Headley, Mike Headley, John Hart and the committee, uh, we come up to an agreement between the committee, which has to go before full council. But our vote was three to zero to keep the area on East High Street between Maple and Main alone. No reserved parking and, but still keep the three hour parking limit on North South Maple Street, North South Main Street. Uh, no parking limit, like the three hour parking, there wouldn't be any kind of parking limits. No reserved parking spots for any businesses or anything either. Uh, Slattery oil signs on South Main Street are okay. Uh, it's actually their own personal property. We look back at old emails from 2011 and 2014, uh, from the village saying that it was their property. They actually paid for the concrete work and everything once they found out it was actually theirs. Uh, the subway signs on the west side of the building is, would be okay because that's on their personal property. But the committee was three in oh favor to, uh, have the signs removed on the front of the subway. The ones that are not enforceable or not really legal. Uh, the Napa signs on North Main Street or North Maple, uh, the loading zone with the lines painted in the spot, leave the sign as is. Been there forever and, uh, they said that they will not, Mike and Randy Headley said they will not park vehicles there long-term unless they're loading and unloading vehicles. The Napa spot from the machine shop that's painted and has lines, and they said just leave it as is and they'll make sure nobody parks that spot, including themselves. Uh, the Napa sign on South Maple Street, uh, actually they leased that building out for storage and there's a garage door or two there on that building and they just want to make sure nobody blocked the, the doors. Uh, and we're okay with the sign. They said that they would remove the area that says tow ways, towing zone and I already went by there. They've already painted that saying, uh, do not block drive. So, uh, they removed the tow, towing zone. So, uh, the committee then discussed the possibility of a sidewalk throughout the park, which Mike already discussed. And a lot of different parties looking and willing to donate towards that kind of project. So, um, I guess our vote was three zero for all the different following ones. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to look over them all, but Troy said we'd have to have council's, uh, blessing on when we voted to approve that.
We need a motion first, Troy. I'll make that motion while he just read.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thank you. Your minutes were detailed and clear.
Thanks.
We will go on to finance committee report. Met November 26th.
Yes, ma'am. Um, pretty self-explanatory except for a couple of things. Um, the electrical and, and the server contracts and things, uh, we'd already discussed them in open session, agreed to it. Uh, we also kind of agreed that we would, uh, try to get Mark a, a generator out there. Uh, furnace, uh, when they redid the heat out there, they did away with the, we lost the heat in the, in the back end and in the evidence room. Uh, one of his officers went to a, an evidence room, uh, how to store evidence, uh, and, and it is required that they have heat and AC for a climate-controlled environment. Just that one small room that they have in the back. So, we think we can get that done for the numbers that you're seeing there. Um, we're going to, and Kent was in charge, was going to get just a hanging heater to put in the, in the big bay back there. Um, and the transmission has given them problems in that 2015 Explorer, the white one, um, looked at getting a new vehicle. Uh, that one is, like I say, it's 15. It's got just over a hundred thousand on it miles. Um, in, in talking with the chief, uh, we've decided that we are going to fix it and he did some research. Uh, he got numbers for here in town. Uh, he also got numbers out of town. If we take it out of.
Still wait, I still haven't got my numbers from in town yet, but.
But the ball parts that we had.
Yeah, I did get, I guess I did get numbers from Schmitz.
Yeah. So, uh, by taking it out of town and, and the committee agreed that if we, if it was a large savings, that we would do the out of town and it was a large savings, uh, over a thousand. Uh, so it is set to go to Fort Wayne Wednesday and get a transmission put in it, uh, for, uh, $2,000 less than what that statement says. Um, and of course the heat in the garage. Uh, all these numbers went through Cheryl and the way that we are coming up with financing for the majority of this, how things will be paid for in 16, or excuse me, 19, and also in 20, uh, is Mark has agreed to, uh, we're gonna back off hiring another officer and use those monies, uh, to make these things happen.
Are you saying there will not be another officer hired in 2020?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying we are backing off.
In 2019, there will not be one.
And, and, um, we'll get everything fixed and everything working, uh, see how things going, are going, see how the money is. Uh, it might be something we'd have to wait until we do another budget for 2021. Um, it's all kind of in, in the, in the big picture. Nothing's concrete. Um, but that's pretty much what happened. Uh, and if there are any questions, I would be more than happy to try to answer them, but.
Do you have any questions?
I do have a question for the finance committee, but I don't know if now's the time to ask or wait till we get to the appropriations.
Why don't we wait till we get to the appropriations? I have a question also.
Please have clarification. Not hiring an officer until 2020, until after the first year is the way I took it. Yeah, hiring him before 2020.
Is that amount of savings from this month of, you're gonna be able to pay for $15,400 for this stuff?
I've got.
I don't know, I don't know what the budget is. I mean, I know we tried to keep the budgets.
I went to her before I purchased anything and she told me I had the money there. It's the not hiring the officer before the end of the, end of 2019. We will save money because we went two officers short, all right, for a couple of months. That's where the money's coming from to pay for the transmission. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So we have the money to hire the eighth officer at, at 2020, which I had already went to Cheryl prior to that meeting and saying, we're not gonna start a new officer until after 2020 before we're into the new budget. We cannot go without an eighth officer. I can tell you that.
So I got the impression the transmission is this year and all the rest of this is next year?
Everything doesn't come out of this year. It's split between the two years.
So then is the $675,000 police department budget in the appropriations a new amount or an old amount?
It's the same amount.
So you need to add this money on top of it?
The difference was only $700. So when I talked to Julie, we just left it the way it was.
No change from previous appropriation?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the finance committee report.
Thank you.
Looks good. Are there any other committees of council that wants to give a report? Okay, we will go on to the administrative report.
After five months, EPA finally sent the official letter about the violation we had in April, saying everything was taken care of, which was back in pain. Couldn't have long to send the letter. So it's nothing new that happened since. Uh, current things, we are still doing leaves, but I want it to be done Friday. So, there's only some last minute movies out there until Friday at four o'clock to rake them. Asking people to get them out there before then.
Well, I think you're gonna have to go down to my office and have a talk with my maple tree because it's not surrendering nothing.
Well, then you're hustling. And that's what, some people are saying we should do this year round. And I'm saying, sorry. So we're hoping December 6th is it. Uh, they got done with making around those leaves this morning. They did go around and pick up the big limbs that came down from the storms. We're done with that. There's some piles that are still out that have been out there for two, three months that I know weren't storm damaged. So those can stay. Uh, so people don't need to go and start trimming up trees and hauling all their brush out front. What's that, what it's for? We picked up storm damage. Twigs, people can haul them. I don't think that's being too much of a Scrooge. Um, there, yeah, must be, what have any questions here?
Does anybody have any questions for Kent about anything?
Nope. Thank you for what you're doing out there. You got your staff out there working, colder weather and everything and raking and.
You're hustling.
Yep, appreciate that.
Yep. Before we go to the solicitors report, I'm gonna, I, I had a note on my desk tonight. Um, Stacy Federkey of the Humane Society was here tonight and, uh, I was wondering if you'd like to go up to the podium and talk to whatever somebody wanted to talk to council about.
Actually, it's actually me. It's me. Yes, I appreciate you giving us a minute on the agenda tonight. Um, had reviewed the video from the last meeting that, that was released last Wednesday. So had a chance to look at that over the weekend and I just felt like, two things, wanted to clarify, um, what our request was. There seemed to be some confusion the last time. And by all means, I'm not here looking for anybody to reconsider anything. Not looking for that at all. I'm just simply wanting to clarify what we had requested and why. Um, and, and just kind of make sure everybody's on the same page with that. And then, um, again, want to reiterate the role of the humane agent because there were comments made in that last meeting that again, we weren't doing our job and that's simply not true. So I want to address that as well and just make sure, again, we're all on the same page with this. This is absolutely, um, by no means, uh, I am not looking for anything beyond that, beyond clarification. So it, it's two topics. One, I'll go to our request and that was something we were here about a year ago, actually, in late, uh, mid-December in 18, asking for some financial assistance in 2019. And that was strictly to, for us to continue to provide low-cost span neuters to the public. It's not something we have to do. It's a service that we provide to the community. Um, most importantly, for those folks that can't afford to, um, you know, pay the prices that it would cost to get that done at a local veterinarian. So we subsidize that. We offer, for example, a neuter is $25. You're not gonna find that anywhere close to that, um, at a, at a vet's office. So we subsidize what it actually costs, the rest of what it costs us to do that. So it's a public service that we're offering. Um, this is, again, for the public's pets, not for our shelter pets, but for the outside. We asked the municipalities if they would help us offset those costs. In 2019, it was a one-time request. We made that clear and, and I think everybody was in agreement. This isn't something that's ongoing. We're not gonna keep coming back year after year and asking. It was simply for us to kind of get things kicked off this year. And going forward, we'll apply for grants and look for other avenues to subsidize those costs that, that we incur. Um, in February, I had sent a request letter. We had talked about it in December, but in February, I officially sent that request letter, provided some updated numbers in that request letter. You all graciously, um, agreed to award half of what we requested. I think it was in the March, one of your March meetings. Um, and at that time, our understanding was you were gonna do half, kind of see how it goes. We would provide some updates and, and we'd go from there. Um, in April, I sent another update letter, a thank you letter and an update letter with where we stood through quarter one. In November, I sent another letter saying where we stood through quarter three, just counts, um, just some statistics for you to see where we were in the program. Um, the counts that were noted in those letters were all specific to the village of Hicksville. I know that was a, a question early on when we were here last December. Um, were the counts Hicksville in general or was it just the village of? So anything after that was specific to the village. Again, this service that we provide, again, addressing some other comments, the service we provide is, is to help offset this problem in the future. It's not going to correct the cat problems today. This is to prevent, obviously, future litters of cats. Cheryl, thank you for providing some statistics last time. That was very nice. Uh, and she's absolutely right. An average female cat can reproduce and, uh, for many, many years, but in an average year, up to 12 kittens. So you can imagine it's a pretty quick multiplication in, in a given year. This will not fix the problem today. It won't fix the problem tomorrow. It's for the future and trying to get a handle on this in the future. And that's why we are providing this service to the community. So that's kind of, topic one was just the request. And we weren't asking for additional monies. The November letter providing the update through quarter three was simply then coming back around and saying, would you, would you consider releasing the other half of what you had originally approved? That was it. You all discussed that last time, took the vote. I respect that and can certainly, we can move on from there. The other issue is regarding the role of the humane agent. Again, comments were made in the last meeting that we are not doing our job, that we are not assisting Chief Denny with stray cats. And so I just want to clarify, the role of that humane agent is to investigate animal cruelty. It is not to go out and try to find every stray cat, try to pick up every stray cat, to address owners of cats that they think they're a nuisance, even injured cats. If there's stray cats that are injured, I wish we could. But our one resource is there to investigate animal cruelty. And she's done that with 192 calls this year, single, on her own, through quarter three. That's, that's a lot of calls. And it's not just calls and investigating, it's going through the entire process of trying to follow through, put the cases together, file charges, follow it through the court systems, et cetera. That is her, that is her job. That is, we employ her. She is not county funded. She is an employee of Fort Defiance Humane Society. That is what her role is. I wish, again, we could respond to all the cat overpopulation issues in the area. We cannot. But to say she's not doing her job is simply a false statement. And that is not, we spent two years rebuilding this organization. I do not want that to happen. We want to work together with the Defiance County, with the Sheriff's Office. We work perfectly well with all of those organizations and we must. We have to work together as, as servants to the community. And that's what we're trying to do. But we get a lot of calls, as does everybody on the cat problem. It is a problem. We cannot and will not be responding to just the random stray cat calls. We just can't. We also, we're there as a service, as a humane society, for people to bring animals to us. That's how it works. That's, that's how it works with every humane society. They don't go out and pick up animals. Most don't have resources to do that because they're all nonprofit as well. So we have a very small staff. We have the humane agent that we think is a very important role for this community, as you can see by the numbers that we're responding to. And that is what we focus our time on as well as the animals that come to our, to our facility. Taking care of them medically, rehoming them, finding their owners, whatever the case is. But as far as cat bites, as far as feral cats, as far as stray cats, that is not the job, nor is it the role of the humane agent. So I, I'll be happy to answer any questions that come up about that. But I, those comments are really not helping our, our situation at all when they're left like that, as if we're not doing our job.
Okay. Any of you have questions or comments? Thank you for coming.
I was gonna say, can you refresh our memory, my memory? That you said you do have some Hicksville numbers? Because that's the question I had. You know, with the different communities of support of the organization. And I've always been a supporter of, of cats and dogs and humane shelter. But did you have those numbers again?
Yeah, I have, um, from the November letter. Um, and that was through quarter three. Uh, we had done total, we had done 200, um, low-cost public space and neuters along with offering them vacs, low-cost vaccines as well and testing. Um, of those, let me find it here. 15% of those were coming from the village of Hicksville. Um, so I think that came out to, if I remember my math, uh, that came out to like 22, um, that were part of that village of Hicksville, um, benefit. So if that helps.
And that's a hard thing to do. You've got stray cats running around. You gotta catch them first.
That's the hard, that's the hard part about.
Part of any type of job.
There's, there's no ORC ordinances. I mean, other than you can't, you know, they're considered companion animals. You can't just go out and wipe them off the face of the earth. But there's no ordinances like there are for dogs. There's no, you know, cat tags, none of that. And you're certainly not keeping most cats in a confined boundary. I mean, you just can't. So that's, that's the challenge for everybody. And, and you all know, your, your community will call with complaints and, and they need help doing things with stray cats and it's almost impossible. Um, even if we were coming out on calls, the likelihood of us getting here and the cat still being wherever it was going to be is, it's unlikely. So, um, you know, we're doing the best we can with our resources, which are limited. I wish they were unlimited, but they're not. Um, and our focus is on, on the true animal cruelty, that we know we can do something about, seize those animals and then take it through the criminal justice system.
We appreciate you coming and clarifying everything.
Thank you for having us. I appreciate it. At the last minute.
Can I add something to that? I know Mark and I don't agree with, with this situation, but I was kind of disappointed in our council that they turned that donation down. Ron stuck up for it. So I'm gonna cover the donation for you guys. I'm gonna round it up to 1,500.
Well, thank you.
Bob, yours is something else now, I'll tell you.
Okay.
Kind of makes us look bad, don't we?
Yeah.
All right, we will go on to the solicitors report.
First thing I have is ordinance 2019 dash 17, a third reading by caption only, and ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees.
Let's hold over.
Roll call.
Baker?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Next is ordinance 2019 dash 18, a third reading by caption only, the annual appropriations ordinance of the Hicksville village.
Before you vote on that, that's one of the questions I had. Uh, I guess finance committee for that budget for the park, I was on park board for quite a few years and president for a few years. You guys are okay with the amount of money spent, gonna be spent or budgeted for the contractual services and operating supplies?
For the park board, for the contractual services and operating supplies, the dollar amount that has been budgeted or, you guys are okay with that, dollar amount?
I don't know if any.
Do you guys know where, what the money's going towards?
That's what I wasn't sure if I had known.
No.
So there's, so there's like, what's that? So there's, so there's like, what's that?
It's the park board minutes several meetings ago.
No. I had to, I had to get an email from, directly from them to ask them what the items were, because I never got anything. So, they requested, budgeted $72,750 for stuff for improvements in the park, including making field three grass infield, which then limits it to only one age group of kids can play on that field, $10,000. Little league lights, $1,400, possibly up to $5,000 of all the ballots to replace, rewiring the outlets and lights at the tennis court, $10,000.
Well, that was a situation where when we were doing day in the park, there is a major electrical problem down there. I mean, it is bad, and it's never been addressed where I think it should be, and they were kind of throwing some numbers out and trying to get some estimates on some of the rewiring and electrical parts, especially at the tennis courts, because when they tried to plug in things there, they're like, wow, it was amazing. Now, the lights for the baseball fields, they are starting to go out, we checked with AEP, they were gonna be big bucks to replace, I think we even talked about, you know, the LED kind of thing.
Right.
So I think they were trying to just get the...
I'm not disagreeing with any of the items that are on the list, but to do it all in one year.
Yeah.
That's a big number. I was on park, we never asked for anything cloaked, and I even had half that amount of money.
A new mower was in there, part of that.
And is their old mower no good anymore?
Yeah, we got, they got pushed off last year, they wanted additional mowers, and I only think they got one, and the other one was getting weak, so I know they use the mowers quite often, and replacement value, back out of them before they get too bad, so. I know there was electrical things within the park that they wanted to address this year.
I'm seeing $1,300 trade-in here, they said no trade-in on the mowers, $9,500 for the new mower, and trade-in the old mower with the bagger, $82.96, so we're getting $1,300 trade-in on that mower and bagger. Just a lot of money in.
I don't owe me all of this.
Right.
I didn't see what budget they turned in, you know, as through the park board and stuff, but I know with the lights and electrical, I know that was gonna increase it quite a bit.
And the money that's in there for other contractual services, being electrical, that's a drop in the bucket to what that place needs down there. You start doing electrical, you know that for yourself, Eric.
I know. I'm not saying that, just like field three, putting the grass infield in that, I know you guys had concerns in the past, being part of the school, about the boys' baseball diamond, you can't change the base paths from 60 to 90 feet because it's grass infield, and everyone always says that ball diamond is kind of a waste, because Hicksville High School kids are the only ones that are able to play on that park, but if you do the same thing to field three, the same thing's gonna happen. Grass that infield in, it's gonna be, only one age group of kids can play, ever play on that.
Which one's field three?
It's the one right, the one after the girls' diamond, the varsity girls' diamond. The one where the outfield's right back there, right fields over by the pavilion, across the road.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's, that's because of the...
Water issue.
Right. You thought about trying to restructure that whole field, so there was not so much water laying in all the time, because they had a dirt, there's still water laying in it, I mean, that's just the way, and then they wanted to tile it and drain it, and I was like, well, you can't run surface water into the, there's no storm drainage out there.
Right.
So there were issues about trying to drain it into the sanitary, or the box, basically, but I think they were trying to alleviate some of the water issues with that field. And I think I noticed was, there was no capital outlay. The other years, there's been 40, 50,000, and I questioned Cheryl on that, and she said they had nothing for capital projects.
Well, because they were talking about trying to redo the girls' concession stand after they did the bathroom, so...
But it's not in the budget, there's any capital.
We pulled it off there, because it wasn't something we thought we could...
Because other years, I've seen it up to $100,000.
Right, but we didn't think we wanted to tackle that job.
Okay, well, that's good.
Right.
Just asking, it was just a big chunk of money, big chunk of money, all one, one year.
It's nice to know you're paying attention.
Yes. Want to make sure you guys are aware of what you guys are approving.
So you did the third, final reading, right? And did we get a motion to approve for a second?
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call. Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
And second reading of ordinance 2019-19 by caption only, and ordinance amending section 345.10 of the codified ordinances of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio regarding multi-use vehicles. And then, third reading, a resolution 2019-13, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a settle agreement, settlement agreement and lease with Haynes Enterprises, Inc.
You want that as an emergency?
Well, it's already the third reading.
It's the third. I think a motion to approve. Excuse me, Eric, refresh my memory, we're not going to own that ground, right?
Right, they're paying us.
They're paying us out.
Yeah. Okay. I'll second.
Roll call. Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And resolution 2019 by, or 19-14, third reading by caption only, a resolution to enter into an agreement with the Defiance County Commissioners for the recovery of monies expended for providing legal counsel to indigent persons for the calendar year 2020.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Jones?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
And then, resolution 2019-15, a third reading by caption only, a resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract with Jones and Henry Engineers, LTD, for design work and construction services related to the new village, well-field, and associated improvements.
So move.
Second.
Roll call. Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
Barth?
Yes.
The only other thing I got while I was on vacation last week, I did get an email from Kent about the well-field and thinking ahead as to annexation issues and stuff, so now that I'm back, I'll, in the next few days, probably send around an email offering my opinion on how that should happen and when it should happen.
Does anybody have any questions for Troy? We'll go on to the Police Chief's report.
I don't have much, except for mainly a public service thing. In the last two weeks, we've had five cars stolen in the Village of Hicksville. Since Thanksgiving, we've investigated a house that was set fire, three stolen vehicles, one stolen vehicle out of the county. As the mayor put out a couple weeks on Facebook, please lock your cars up, take your keys, all the cars had keys left in the ignition, take your valuables out of them, any personal effects, remove them from the cars, do not leave the cars unlocked. Another car was stolen out of Pauline County, that was as a result of one of our cars that was stolen out of the county, they dumped it and stole one out of Pauline County, but we recovered that in Hicksville, so we're conducting joint investigations between the county, us and Pauline County, with these thefts, everything going on. Anybody would have video, home videos, you know, area of West Bryant, or North Bryant Street, High Street, 300 block of West High Street, intersection of High and Spencervale, Mill Creek Drive, had an officer out there today going door-to-door, checking, so if anybody's got home security, we're looking for any footage that they may have in regards to these thefts, so. That's all I've got right now.
Yep, thank you. Bruce, are you here in place of the Fire Chief?
Yeah. Well, I don't have any, we don't have any.
You don't?
Our department has nothing tonight.
Okay, and the EMS has nothing?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Unless we have some executive session, we're here all night, I got a note, if you could give it to Scott, if you'll catch me if...
Okay, we will go on to the Fiscal Officer's report.
One's pretty short, I have the fund status, a letter from the Community Action, and about the new grant that they've received, and also, MediaCom has new lineup changes and some rate increases, again.
Anybody have any questions for Cheryl? Did you share this information with Bill Murphy too, Cheryl?
Tonight.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yes.
At the conclusion of this, of this meeting, I'd like to request an executive session.
Okay.
Brief, Kent.
Okay. Well, I would just like...
Just give it a boost before we go into that.
I'd like to thank everybody that was involved in the Christmas parade, and I would like to encourage everybody to drive through the Christmas cruise through, it's a lot of work down there, and a wonderful event, and make a donation, you can volunteer, I'm sure they'd appreciate your help in some position inside or out. Anything else going on around town? Mike, you always keep me straight, yes you do.
I do, I do, I try to. The Christmas cruise is beautiful, they spend a lot of time, a lot more decorations are down there, and it's very nice, so big caduce to all who helped out with that, that project, and hope it continues to grow and get bigger, more people from all over come and visit it, visit our town, so we got a beautiful town. The Chamber has come out this year with a commemorative Christmas bulb, it is actually of our war memorial down at the park, it's a very nice full-color picture, it is on sale at a couple different establishments in the village, I do not know which ones those are, but if you go to the Chamber or Facebook page, or maybe their website, it would list what those, where those businesses are. I think they're $10 a bulb, they would make a nice Christmas gift, sorry, my phone's going off. You get a fine for that, or anything?
Oh, yeah.
Make them one.
They want to do something special for the community, especially for our war memorial that they have built down there at the park, it's very nice, and hopefully, if anybody is interested in purchasing them, I'm sure they can find some in the community to buy.
Someone watching might be trying to call you to remind you, is there anything else to mention?
Tell you where they can be purchased at.
Yeah, well, I guess you'll find out about the Tribune tomorrow, but, you know, but we're doing a little story about the bulb itself, and Country Pedal has kind of spearheaded that project for them. Tracy's also done the parade, Chamber's been working hard with the Christmas parade in town, Santa, the Huber, and the Christmas bulb, so thank you to the Chamber and Tracy for doing that, so.
Yeah, check, check the Huber Facebook page, I got things coming up in December, and I know Community Memorial Hospital is having their Cookie Walk, if they still call it that, this weekend at the hospital, Friday, maybe Saturday morning yet, there'll be baked goods down there to pick up, so, anybody else know of any other community events? I have nothing for the Mayor's report, so I guess Ron made a motion to go in.
Request an executive session for personnel.
Someone second up?
I'll second that.
You want to do it?
All right.
If you want to, roll call. Jones?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ridgeway?
Yep.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Thanks.